Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Abington's Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, March 10, 2016. And may I have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Be advised, Commissioner Calhoun Gillespie is excused for the evening. And at this time, will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have a couple presentations. And first, I'd like to call on Doug Wendell, Director of Parks and Recs.
Thank you, Mr. President. And also, if you wouldn't mind coming down, help us with this, Mr. President, and also, Commissioner Spiegelman.
My honor.
I'll defer to Mr. Spiegelman. He can come down. Thank you, sir.
As you wish. And I'd like to introduce Senator Art Haywood. Senator's here to present the check for our grant that we received for the feasibility study.
So, thank you very much. On behalf of Representative Dean, who could not be here tonight, but who I'm a partner in trying to bring as many state resources to Abington as possible, I'm glad to present, and let me do so now, a check. Relatively. A check from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. You're already aware of the award. I know it's going to look at studying pools up in Crestmont and another area, and we're glad that that, in Pembry, glad that that can happen. You know, we've had a number of challenges in the state trying to get money to communities, as basic as trying to get a budget done. But we're glad that we're able to free up some money, and hopefully, we could do even more. We have received a long list of projects from your township manager, and have committed to work with him to get as much funding for those projects as we can. So, on behalf of Representative Dean, and Governor Wolf, DC and I, and myself, I'm glad to present the hopefully, new beginning of getting some state resources to your community. This is it. Thank you so much.
Mr. Spiegelman, Commissioner Spiegelman, did you want to make any brief comments?
Brief? That's my middle name. Senator Haywood, we are truly grateful. We do understand, all of us, I think everyone in the Commonwealth understands, the pressures and complexities that you and State Rep. Dean, and all of our representatives have been dealing with in this budget situation, Governor Wolf as well. And this money is so crucial to the beginning of a project that, as Doug has been warning us for years, is something that must be done and should be done, and is going to be so beneficial to so many people who enjoy and truly love our pools. So, really, I think on behalf of the entire board, thank you so much for all of your help with this.
Senator Haywood, thank you very much, Senator. Thank you.
Excellent job, Commissioner Spiegelman. Again, thank you, Senator Haywood. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Kalanowski for a presentation for Cub Scout Pack 48 of Glen Slade.
Shiloh, you want to come up here with me? So, how we always recognize the Boy Scouts that become Eagle Scouts. So, Shiloh, this year, he has earned the highest achievement as a Cub Scout program, the Arrow of Light Award. And now, he's gone on through the Blue and Gold, and he's going to become a Boy Scout in Pack 437 out of Roslyn. So, I wanted him to come here tonight. We've done a couple Blue and Gold banquets at the VFW, and this pack really stood out as one of the biggest packs of Cub Scouts. And the Blue and Gold is really a neat program that, come up here, Valerie. Valerie Blum lives in North Hills, and she's also a part of that. So, maybe, could you tell us a little about the Cub Scouts and the Blue and Gold?
Well, the Blue and Gold is a banquet that's held annually, and it's when all the Cub Scouts are recognized for achieving their rank that year. So, Shiloh, and he's a member of a den. There were six kids who went all the way through from when they were tigers, they were so little, and they've gone through the Cub Scout program. And each year, they're taking on new responsibilities, learning about their world. It's a good program, like, just for them to have the opportunity to learn all kinds of things about citizenship, fitness, the environment, et cetera. So, Shiloh had gone through the entire program. He basically graduated from that program, and now, he is excited he crossed over to the Boy Scout program. And the troop that he chose is 437 out of Roslyn.
One more thing. Today is Shiloh's 12th birthday, so we could maybe sing a little happy birthday to Shiloh. What do you think? I love you. Ready? Here we go. He doesn't want us to do that. We're horrible singers, anyway. But lots of birthday wishes going your way. Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Kalanowski. Shiloh, congratulations. At this time, we'll move on to our formal agenda, and I'd like to call on Vice President Stephen Klein for approval of the minutes.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the Board of Commissioners meeting from February 11, 2016.
Second.
They're moved to seconded. Any comments from Commissioners or staff? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Tom Hekker, Director of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. The Public Works Committee has two items of business this evening. The first is PW1. This is Consent Assessment, Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. And this is a motion to authorize the acceptance of the PA DEP's Consent Assessment of Civil Penalty in lieu of litigation for sanitary sewer overflows in 2014 and 2015, including authorizing the payment not to exceed $4,150 from the contingency expense account number 02-10-200-5299, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
PW2 is Ordinance Number 2116, Old Welsh Road Sanitary Sewer District and Sewer Assessment. And this is a motion to advertise Ordinance Number 2116, establishing the Old Welsh Road Sewer District, assessing the branch of sanitary sewers on Old Welsh Road for adoption at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners on April 14, 2016, at 7:30 p.m., and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And that concludes the Public Works Committee's business this evening.
At this time, did you want to call on Commissioner Farron? You had a comment.
I did. Thank you, President Luker. I just had something that I wanted to bring up to the attention of the public. I think what happened in Flint, Michigan, took many of us by surprise on a variety of levels, not the least of which that what we consider the people to be stewards of our safety and our health with one of the primary components of life, which is water, allowed that to deteriorate to such a position where children's lives were in jeopardy, our elderly lives were in jeopardy. And it was hard to believe it could happen anywhere in the United States, let alone somewhere near us. And recently, there's been an incident in Horsham, and I've had a couple people asking me how we would be affected, or if we were affected, by what was going on to an area that was so close to us. So, I just wanted to ask Manager LaFever if he could touch base a little bit with us on where we are with our water quality in Abington, and how we may or may not be related to the Horsham situation.
Thank you, Commissioner Farron. There's two separate issues there, in Horsham and in Plank. Horsham, it relates to well water. The well water has been contaminated by activity at the Bullard Grove Air Force Base. Basically, fire retardant they use as part of the training exercise has leaked into the ground and contaminated well water. Abington as a whole is fortunate that the vast majority of our residents, the upper 90 percentile, are on public water, not on well water. And those problems that are are not congregated in an area that is susceptible to contamination from outside source. So, the wells are safe in Abington. As the public water system, you know, we're forced to make an offer, and you see what we're from Aqua. Probably, a lot of people here know it, and residents in the community have seen their street report up recently by Aqua that's undergoing a very aggressive main replacement program specifically in Acton Township. And over the last couple of years, have literally spent millions of dollars in this community replacing the water main. So, I'm confident that we're in a very good position in terms of water quality, and I don't see anything comparable that's having Horsham, Worthlin, Michigan ever occur again.
Great. Thank you, Manager LaFever.
Okay, any other comments from Public Works? Okay, hearing none, we'll turn our next Director of Code Enforcement and Land Development, Commissioner Brent Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have CE1, Ordinance Number 2117, amending Chapter 162, Zoning, Section 600, Floodplain Conservation Overlay District, Subsection 5, Definitions. This is a motion to advertise Ordinance Number 2117, amending Chapter 162, Zoning, Section 600, Floodplain Conservation Overlay District, Subsection 5, Definitions, for adoption at the regularly scheduled meeting on April 14, 2016, at 7:30 p.m., and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, with your permission, I believe Commissioner Spiegelman would like to give an update on the vacant property review board meeting.
Yes, sir.
Briefly, as always, Mr. President, thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. So, the vacant property review board is up and running. We are populated with our representatives from the various county and local boards and our citizen appointees. And so, we've started our work. I'm happy to say that I guess people like my long-winded comments, because I'm actually going to be serving as the Chair of the Board. Our secretary is Mr. Matteo, whom I hope to razz on tonight, but he's clearly not here. But I do want to thank everybody, you know, all the citizens who are participating, and thank our Solicitor's Office for helping with some legal clarifications so that we can move forward with our work. But we're expecting good things in the effort to prevent and remediate blight in our township. So, we're really looking forward to doing some good works. And anyone who wants to join us for a meeting, they're open to the public. It's the first Thursday of every month at 4:00 p.m. right here in this fine room.
First Thursday of every month at 4:00 p.m.?
Yes. chaired by me, so, you know, get comfortable.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any questions, comments from Commissioners? Okay. Again, any from staff or residents? And if there are none, that concludes your agenda?
That concludes our agenda. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. At this time, I'd like to turn the program over to Commissioner Lori Schreiber, Director of Public Safety.
Thank you, President Luker. We have three items this evening. PS1 is a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2114, amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Parking Regulations, Section 9.2, No Left Turn, and Section 11, Turns at Intersections, at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners tonight, March 10, 2016, at 7:30 p.m., and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
PS2 is a motion to advertise Ordinance Number 2115, amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations, Section 14, Stop Intersection, and Article 3, Parking Regulations, Section 26, Parking Prohibited During Certain Hours for Adoption at the Regularly Scheduled Meeting of the Board of Commissioners on April 14, 2016, at 7:30 p.m., and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Spiegelman?
Mr. President, just briefly as a reminder, this, part of this ordinance includes the matter of the time-restricted parking that's coming to the 1100 block of Brevania Avenue. And I cannot say enough how helpful Traffic Safety Officer Freed was in getting this, helping us get this all together for myself and Commissioner Schreiber. So, we're looking, I think the folks there are looking forward to that time-restricted parking.
Thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners? Any from staff or residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And PS3 is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 16014, expressing opposition to Senate Bill 1055, expanding the sale, usage, and storage of consumer fireworks in Pennsylvania, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. At this time, Commissioner John Spiegelman, Director of Public Affairs.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Tonight, the Public Affairs Agenda consists of three items. The first is PA1, Pool Feasibility Study Grant Award. This is a motion to accept a grant from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for a feasibility study for the Pembry and Crestmont Pools in the amount of $15,000, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Or residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Items PA2 and PA3 pertain to Penn State Abington, and will be appearing on the Public Affairs Agenda for April. So, we move on to PA4, C2P2, Grant Application for the Ardley Wildlife Sanctuary. This is a motion to approve the Bureau of Parks and Recreation and the Shade Tree Commission to apply for a DCNR C2P2, that's Community Conservation Partnership Program Development Grant for Improvements to the Ardley Wildlife Sanctuary, guided by the above referenced Land Management Plan and Abington Township MS4 Program. A match of $20,000 will be required if the grant is awarded. Funding of the match will come from the 2017-2018 MS4 funding, and I so move.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Our final item is PA5, Settlement of Pateen 1180 Eastern Road Condemnation Proceedings. This is a motion to approve a settlement agreement on the litigation related to the condemnation proceedings for 1180 Eastern Road, an authorized payment of $125,000 to the condemnedee for payment of reasonable costs related to that process, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, that concludes the Public Affairs Agenda for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. At this time, Commissioner, Vice President Stephen Klein, Director of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to first call on Township Treasurer Jay Blumenthal for the Treasuries Report.
This is record time this evening. Thank you. First on the agenda is the monies received from various departments in the township which have deposited into the public bank. You may or may have noticed there's a change in my report this month. This was discussed in Finance Committee last month. Kevin Barron and I have been working on this idea for a while. Previously, the report did not show all monies being deposited. We did not show the amount, we didn't reflect the amount that the Finance Department received via ACHs, credit card deposits, even monies flowing up from my office for real estate taxes and other items. So, Kevin and I worked up a system, looking at the prior year and the current year which is deposited. And if you'll notice, under the third line down, where we normally just have Finance Department with figures for the month and also year-to-date, I've added Finance Department and ACHs and credit cards. The ACHs, by the way, can also be comprised of grant money and other reimbursements, et cetera. So, with that said, the total deposited for the month of February into the bank account was $4,823,359, whereas last year was $3,349,351, with an increase of $1,474,008. And the year-to-date, the total is $6,045,548, with the prior year of $4,683,043, with an increase year-to-date of $1,362,505. So, I think this is a better reflection of actually what our cash flow is. As for the real estate collected, real estate tax, the first month being collected for the year is February of every year. And for the month of February of 2016, we collected $1,148,274. Year-to-date is the same figure, of course, because it was the first month, with a balance to collect for the year, by the end of the year, of $25,614,908. If you'll notice, February of '15, we brought in $643,506. So, we have an increase for the month compared to the prior year of a little over half a million dollars, $5,047,68. That's my report. I'll entertain any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. FC1, Motion to A, Approve the January Expenditures as Previously Circulated to the Board in the Amount of $2,235,040.39, and Salaries and Wages in the Amount of $2,162,183.82, and B, Authorize the Proper Officials to Sign Vouchers in the Payment of Bills and Contracts as They Mature Through the Month of April 2016, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any roll call, please?
Mr. Sipper?
Yes.
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 Bowman?
Yes.
Farron?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Kalanowski?
Yes.
Blom?
Yes.
Yes.
FC2, Motion to Approve the Advance in Travel Expense Activity for January 2016. As Previously Circulated to the Board, advance in travel expense reports were $0.00 and $5,164.77, respectively. One-month expense total is $5,164.77, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
FC3, Motion to Approve the Clearing Fund, the Deferred Revenue Expense Activity. Petty cash balances for the month of January as previously circulated to the Board. Clearing fund receipts and dispersments for the month of January 2016 were $606.46 and $2,394.81, respectively. Deferred Revenue Expense Receipts and Dispersments for the month of January 2016 were $500 and $20,126, respectively, and I so move.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff and/or residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
FC4, Motion to Adopt Resolution Number 16-008, Amending Resolution Number 01-010, Regarding Travel Policy, and I so move.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners?
President Luker, I had a question. I asked Manager LaFever. I don't know that this was included in the packet that was distributed to the Board this past week.
I apologize. I wasn't aware of that. The board members haven't had the opportunity to review it. I know the Finance Committee has reviewed and discussed it extensively, but the entire Board hasn't had the chance. I would suggest we take it and bring out the next one and have fun at that point. I apologize for the delay.
I just wanted to make a point. Yeah, I mean, we're ready to vote on it, or do we want to defer it?
I suggest we, if it's not going to affect anything, we can defer it to next month.
This, we saw the motion table, and if you wanted to do it that way, the table, it's next month.
Motion to table? Second. All those in favor, to table?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
FC5, Motion to Adopt the Agreement with Montgomery County Housing Authority for the Collection of Unpaid Sanitary Sewer Fees, totaling $49,443 for the years 2011 through 2014, and I so move.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff or residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Oh, I'm sorry. That concludes our agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Tom Bowman, Director of the Pension.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pension Committee has three items. Pension Number 1, this is Resolutions Number 16-011, Amendment to Resolution Number 14-032, Amending the Municipal Employees Pension Plan, Article 12, Section 12.02, Participant Contributions. This is a motion to adopt Resolution 1601, Amendment to Resolution Number 14032, Amending Article 12, Section 12.02, Municipal Employees Pension Plan, Participant Contributions, Affirming the Continuation of Increased Employee Contributions at the Rate of 5% of applicable compensation for calendar year 2016 and thereafter, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Pension 2 is Resolution Number 16-012. This is a Restatement of Abington Township's Non-Uniform Employees Pension Plan Investment And this is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 16.012, Updating the Abington Township's Non-Uniform Employees Pension Plan Investment Policy as Prepared by PFM Advisors, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any comments from staff or residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And finally, Pension 3 is Resolution Number 16-013, a Restatement of Abington Township's Police Pension Plan Investment Policy. This is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 16-013, Updating the Abington Township's Police Pension Plan Investment Policy as Prepared by PFM Advisors, and I so move.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And that concludes our business, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. And that concludes our formal agenda for this evening. I see no one has signed up to comment on any agenda items. At this time, I'll open the floor for any comments from residents. Please come up and state your name and address, and if you could keep your comments within the three-minute timeframe, please. Thank you, sir.
One thing I'd like to ask is, how often is data security audited in this township? What's the policy? For example, finance, ACH payments?
When you say data security...
Data security, ACH payments.
Right.
Pay my taxes, you know, that's computerized. So, who audits the computer data information? How often is that done? Where is it done?
Okay. Manager LaFever, do you want to answer that, or?
Yeah, I don't have the answer off the top of my head, but I'll certainly get that information and report back to Mr. Bell soon as possible.
Okay.
Thank you. Also, I want to call your attention to the fact that last night and tonight, when I came over here, the funeral home, two lots were loaded with cars, funeral, and plus the church activity. And last night, I almost got hit by a car going up 711, you know, because they park on my combing, and people walking.
on like combing and people walking. And I'm just calling that to your attention because as the summer months come, it's going to be more parking on that side. So when the craft has the two lots full and you have a church non-worship activity, you know, you've got cars still coming around like combing and parked. So I just want to call that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any other comments from residents? If not, we'll start with comments from Commissioners. Commissioners LaFever?
Yeah, two items here. Our Ardsley Day Committee will be holding its second annual breakfast with the Easter Bunny, Sunday, March 20, from 9:00 AM to noon, at the North Penn VFW. And also, our second annual Designer Bag Bingo will be held Friday, April 22, at the North Penn VFW. Doors will open at 6:00 PM. And anybody that's interested can contact me for tickets.
Thank you. Commissioner Spiegelman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of words of thanks. I've gotten a lot of help recently from Mr. George Wrigley, our Director of the Waste Water Treatment Plant, and Community Development Director, Mr. Van Struther, on a lot of things going on, very good things, positive developments in Ward 11 in the vicinity of the water tower. And they've been really doing a lot of legwork, ultimately on behalf of residents. So just want to say thanks for that. And although he's not here, I do have to thank Mr. Mark Penical, our Zoning Officer, for help with a very wrought and complicated situation on a property in my neighborhood of Highland Farms. He's been immeasurably helpful. And just want to remind everybody this weekend, spring forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. President. No comment this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, want to invite the community over to the Easter egg hunt at Albert Thorpe Park, which will take place on March 19, 10:00 AM, 10:00 AM sharp. The eggs will be gone at about 10:00 AM, maybe 30 seconds later. So.
Don't be late.
Yeah, if you're coming, please be there a few minutes early, to say the least, find parking. Secondly, that next morning, let's keep the party going in Ward 3, over at the McKinley Firehouse. We have, yeah, thank you, Commissioner DePosito. He will be there proudly, as will I, eating a ton of pancakes, supporting the volunteer firehouse that we have there. So that is from 8:00 AM until 12:00 noon. $7 for adults, $5 for children. And if you have any questions, anybody in the community about that, you can reach me, drewrothman@ward3@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. In Commissioner Gillespie's absence, she asked me to remind everyone about the Keep the Parade Running 5K and 1 Mile Fun Walk, and that's on Saturday, April 9, at 8:00 in the morning. And I'm sure that anyone that's interested, there's still plenty of room for walkers and runners. And I think that you can find information about that on glenside4event.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Markman?
No comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber.
We have two items this evening. So after you go to the Easter egg hunt in Ward 3, but before you go to the pancake breakfast in Ward 3, you can stop over in Ward 14, because Saturday, March 19, is our 10th Annual Roslyn Film Festival. We have now chosen the seven short films that are going to be shown. You can be a film critic for the evening and go over and watch all the films, and then there's a ballot, the filmmakers are there, and you can vote on your favorite film. In addition, at the beginning, there is a red carpet with our own Commissioner Spiegelman hosting that. And we have concession stand. All proceeds go to the fire company in Roslyn, the Roslyn Fire Company, so please come and support the fire company. In addition, on Saturday, March 26, we're having, we're expanding Coffee with a Cop, which I know has been all over the township, to Coffee with a Cop and a Congressman. So Congressman Brendan Boyle has agreed to be at our Coffee with a Cop in Roslyn from 9:00 AM on 3/26, 9 to 11, at Riviera Pizza. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Commissioner Bowman?
Yes, taking a cue from Commissioners LaFever and the Ardsley Committee and the day that they have, we are now planning a Roslyn Community Day for Roslyn Park on May 21. That will be, we don't know the exact time yet, probably in the 12:00 noon neighborhood, but if anyone is interested in helping the Roslyn Day Committee, they can contact myself or Commissioner Schreiber, and we'll put you in touch with the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DePosito?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Commissioner Rothman for not mentioning that I won't be cooking the pancakes this year. I've been invited back. I may have to revise my comments, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Help, so while you're driving to this pancake breakfast, please drive like your kids live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Farron?
Thank you, President Luker. Just a couple of things. It's a little late, a little late right now, but the 5K, kind of jumping off the Keep the Parade Running 5K, this Saturday is our Copper Beach Golden Green 5K and Fun Run. You can register Friday night at the Big Pickup or Saturday morning, either way is fine, and you can find information on the Facebook page, or you can always reach out to, give me a call. On Sunday, we have the Kevin from Heaven Ice Skating, annual ice skating at the rink at Old York Road. This supports the Kevin from Heaven Foundation, which is an educational motivation for the neighborhood in Glenside from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. Monday night, the Glenside Gardens Civic Association will be having a meeting at the Riviera D'Alia, down in Roslyn, actually, on Eastern Road. There will be some light, we'll call them soft drinks provided for those in attendance, and we'll be talking about what's going on in the neighborhood. On April 2, is a Beef and Beer for the Turner Family, for little Ally who is still struggling, but is making incredible progress, and it's very, very heartening to see. But her progress does not mean the challenge is over, so if you can come out to the Beef and Beer for the Turners on April 2, again, there's information on the website, on Facebook, or you can reach out to me, and then just thoughts and prayers to the Gillespie family. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farron. Commissioner Hacker?
Thank you, President Luker. A few brief items. The Abington-Rochester Baseball Association will be hosting its annual Beef and Beer